Thank you so much. Good evening. This is the Chappaqua Board of Trustees Monthly Meeting. We thank anyone who's able to join us. I'll call the meeting to order and we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. We're counting on the screen. And justice for all. I neglected to point out that for Robin, really, that we have emergency exits out to the parking lot and behind me out to the gallery walkway and the courtyard for exterior as well as through the library itself. So it is Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And with us, we have the full board with the exception of Liz Pimson, who hopefully will join us shortly. We're also joined by our director, Bob Conrad, our staff assistant, Chantel Pena, and Joe Gallo on screen. As our trainer and Robin. And Robin. Okay. We have had discussion about a number of issues that may be appropriate for an executive session. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session? We would have to state the subject as well. So I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel. To discuss personnel matters and that's at seven oh five. Do I have a second? We second the motion, we'll be entering executive session. I estimate we will be fifteen to twenty-five minutes. Will be as expedient as possible. So we are just up without. Hello, we are meeting back to order. We may have seven forty-four, thank you very much. We made no motions, we made no. Help notes. Time required. Okay. We have the, shall we begin with the acceptance of the minutes? Does anyone have any concerns with the minutes as presented? For our January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. No issues? Okay. With that, we'll accept the January twenty-third, twenty-three minutes as presented. Thank you very much. You may not further read. Seventy minutes on the order. Okay. Bob, can we turn to in terms of the director's report?
Sure, my director's report begins with a report of the long-range plan. Consider this a fairly big update, but really the first from me. So in many ways, it's a snapshot of what the library has accomplished before and since I've been hired. And what I did, it's a largely written report, so that means we can reference it briefly in the meeting. But I just made a number of bullet points in light blue color that refer to things we've done in service of certain broadly stated goals. Or if it's a more specific thing that was done in service of these most specifically stated metrics, then I listed them under the metrics. Basically, I could shoehorn it into a metric I did because it's specific and if I couldn't, then it goes under a goal. You'll see that I think we've made a lot of progress on many of these goals and metrics in favor of the first point of the long-range plan, champion diversity, equity, and inclusion. And just for anyone watching this recording, I'll say that we completed a wheelchair accessibility audit with recommendations forthcoming. We formed a staff committee on equity included and diversity. That was created prior to October twenty-two. And we subsequently adopted, Yale, the American Library Association, recommended the EI checklist for our committee to tackle. Those are two examples. We moved our New York State Assembly proclamation commending our own accessibility leadership. We moved that to the lobby for visibility purposes because it's one thing to be diverse, equitable, and it's another thing to let people know that they are. So moving on, we have some.
Is that a sign in something like in Braille?
The sign is not in Braille, the proclamation came from the New York State Assembly in the form that proclamations do, it's a written document in calligraphy. And it's in the lobby on your way in now. So it used to be on the way into the director's office in the staff control area. And now it's where others can see. So another major part of the long-range plan is to improve the library's community engagement. And it has several goals and metrics. And I'll tell you, this is, this could easily be the focus of my attention for the next three years in order to achieve these things. Trying to be brief in my reports, I will refer you to the document online unless you have questions. Furthermore, we're going to provide relevant and impactful library services. It's a very broadly defined long-range plan goal, but it has specific metrics of restoring the theater to fully operational status that I'm pleased to report. We, well, we're sitting in the theater, so you can see that it's returned to operational use. But we also have an estimate coming in from a theater tech company and discussion on whether to provide competing vendors' estimates. So some improvements could be made in this theater as well. The other two goals of the long-range plan are to ensure the sustainability of the library. I think that's probably the goal that we've made the least specific movement on. But I would remind the board that we have till two thousand and twenty-six to achieve these. And another one is to identify creative solutions to utilize space and infrastructure. And again, with some broadly laid out goals within that goal, but also some more specific metrics. So I would refer anyone curious to see that status update online. And if I am to present on this quarterly, then I will color code additions to it in the future. The board may find that a biannual or a triannual report is more effective. But as I'm new here, this was a very useful a very meaningful use of my time to learn all that the staff and the board had done before my appointment and since I started. The rest of my directors' report largely.
On the theater, thank you so much, by the way, I really, it's so nice that you're taking ownership of the plan and running with it. On the theater in particular, I think one of the things that I'm hoping we do is model good citizenry in the community. So I will take on, there's a woman in the community whose name I will give you, who would be a good person to talk to. But she has some energy, I've seen, in terms of theater. And I would just say, I know the high schools looking at their theater. And I think there's a theater group that is. So I think there's a couple of different entities looking at theaters and theater space and thinking about space upgrades. Probably the performing arts folks of the Chappaqua also have been looking at their auditorium because that one was originally designed for the Wallace to deliver staff meetings. It, you know, it's the performing stage. So between all these different entities, if we can make sure that whatever recommendation comes in front of this board, that we, you know, crossed our eyes and dotted our whatever that saying is, and, and, and make sure that we're reflecting that we know there's these other conversations happening. Because there might be either economies of scale where we're buying the same things and we can get an even better deal on multiple. Or there could just be an efficiency in having the same equipment in multiple places within our district. Because if we want to have, let's say, K through six programs with kids here and then they're going to go and they're going to, you know, get to a different environment. If we have some consistency that helps, and I know the feedback from the librarians has been make sure it's easy to use so that anybody can, can use it, which would, which would go along the lines of, hey, if kids can use it, they can create, they can be masters of this space. So that would be my ask.
So you're suggesting that our director network with other theater.
Private community and in this community. Yes, and, and may, and, and if, you know, whether it's a director or a, or a group of staff here that are interested in, in pursuing the theater, I, I'm, I really am looking beyond just, hey, this is what would work for this theater. I want to make sure that we're talking to the other people collecting tax and private funds and make sure that we're all in alignment.
But the unfortunate thing is, this isn't a networked group right now, right?
So right, Bob would have to, Bob would have to make some relationships. I know there is energy around this. And like I said, I'm going to go on Facebook and pull the one woman who asked for energy around it and indicated that she had done research so that we can link you at least to her and from there.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Are there other questions about my long-range plan status report?
Okay. No, I appreciate the report and I appreciate your pointing out where additional work needs done.
Oh, yeah.
Clarify, thank you.
Long-range plans never really come to an end. Okay, then I'll move on to say that I do have a personnel matter to report and that is effective today. I've received the resignation letter from a longtime library clerk, Mary Roe. And that is mentioned in one of the department reports I'm about to discuss. But having received that today, her resignation is, I think, the end of this month, so presumably the twenty-eighth. Let's see, we did have an adult services report that described mostly the continuing ed opportunities that the department availed themselves of in, in the month of January. It also includes some outreach and staff meetings that they attended. And it gives you a profile of how the museum passes were used in January. The Guggenheim being the most popular museum for our patrons in January, followed immediately by the MoMA. And a fun reference question that was shared with, with library trustees for their amusement. I'll move on to the children's services report.
Well, I apologize, can I interject? If in the coming weeks, with future meetings with our branding specialists, it's good to introduce our communications committee or at least a representative from that committee. So, so they share in that relationship as well.
Sure, Communications Board Committee.
Correct.
Yeah. Got it. I'll report on the children's department report. And I don't want this board or our public to miss just how many well-attended programs this department turns out. These are really great attendance numbers. If you're used to seeing numbers of sections this high and as well attended, then don't take it for granted, even if you're used to seeing it. Most libraries would have trouble posting similar numbers. And clearly, the highest attended program that we had in the month of January, it's really a a bar that we may have trouble passing until at least we get the good zoo programs and then summer reading program. But we had this wonderful Martin Luther King Day program that was co-programmed with the Towns Committee on, I think, Race Equity Inclusion and the Chappaqua PTA. And we had two hundred and twenty-five people participate in that peace march, followed by a live program right here in this theater. So congratulations to the children's room and to the community for supporting that.
The two twenty-five, is that a number that Cree gave us or that we? Because I actually think more than two hundred and twenty-five people for sure participated in the entirety of the program, but I'm just curious, at what point was that counted taken?
I'm going to ask Robin if she happens to know the answer.
Yeah, that came from Teresa and not from the REI. She was also working in the children's room that day, so she was not here for the entirety of the event. And she might have missed people who came and went.
Right, yes. I, I happen to be here for the majority, Brian was here for a large chunk of it as well. It was a great event. The reason why I'm thinking it's higher than the two twenty-five is because the crew that came that marched and initially was seated, then people swapped in and out for hours. So we actually had, you know.
Yeah, if you have a revised estimate, we'd be happy to update our numbers.
I, I think I'm going to count chairs and maybe look at photos and see if.
It's a hundred and forty-four, and then I know we have about another hundred on the floor.
Yeah.
So.
That's great. Awesome. Yeah, I'm going to suggest we maybe revise this upwards just for accuracy, but we should check with Cree because they probably took account.
I don't think that they did, but yeah, I can check with them.
All right.
I'm just kidding when I say add a zero, but we'll, we'll try to get it back.
I mean, I just, I really want everyone to appreciate, I know two hundred and twenty-five is a big number, but it was more, it was over three hundred. Because I just this morning counted fifty kids at Bell School Super Bowl morning, people are running in late and fifty of them have got stuck in that section. So based on that, I'm gauging, we had at least three hundred participants.
May we ask a question on the children's report or are you ready?
Please do.
Okay. Under departmental challenges, so one thing that we know has been a challenge has been, you know, the furniture in that space as a result of the construction that you explained, so can you update that on the designer and all that and furniture requests for the upcoming budget, please?
Are you asking me or Robin?
Either.
Either one of us, okay. Well, we do have, we, we've reached out to a number of library space designers. And I believe we have one scheduled coming up to come in and take a look at our spaces and mainly the children's space, but they're interested in outfits in the larger libraries. And basically, we're going to advance. I think the reason that Robin may have described that as a departmental challenge is because it's exactly what we expect the interior space designer to be able to address and help solve. Make the space a little more welcoming to the upper elementary aged kids who aren't turning out for the, for the programs. Dana, did I answer your question or was there more to it than that?
Did you want anything? No, I mean, yes, we've reached out to a few people. One has already come to do a walkthrough and we're working on a meeting where Bob can also join us so that we can start talking a little more freely.
Great.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah, and we also had inadequate replies from a couple of other designers. So some dead ends and some live needs. Okay.
To my knowledge, Friends hasn't agreed to support that at this early stage, but we're hoping that they are supported down the road. Conceptually, they have still been supportive. So the other thing to know, and we'll talk about it separately, but we may have to undergo a formal.
Okay, so if I'll move on to the circulation report, the first thing to point out is that it is for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. We can't yet report on the two thousand and twenty-four numbers that's available. And as our circulation supervisor was pointing out, the numbers are increasing. It looks like we're getting back to three pre-COVID numbers, in some cases surpassing. That's a, we're passing two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and seventeen. Well, not two thousand and seventeen, that would be a year.
Two thousand and seventeen is probably our benchmark year, maybe two thousand, I don't know when the construction actually started. So our circuit is going to, like we've talked about, be a little bit off because we have the construction before the pandemic.
Yeah, so we're getting there. And then just a really interesting, I thought, anecdote about how a community use of our space led to boost in new library card enrollments because the softball event was held in the library theater. Some people coming in to use the theater space wound up going home with library cards.
So great.
New library cards just arrived and are immediately available. And some patrons have a choice to design.
I'm sorry, before we jump to that, can we just go back to the circulation clerk that you had referred to as submitting a resignation, but actually she's retiring.
I'm sorry, I said resignation and yeah, she is retiring. We're, we're talking about Mary Roe and her time.
Library clerk. It's technically done not a retirement because it's not through the retirement system. So it did that a while ago, but we're calling it a retirement.
Not official. You want to speak to the staff, can you bring it to Dana?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll wait on that, but we just wanted to thank her because in addition to the hard work and dedication that's mentioned in this report, she's also ninety years old. So wow, what a full life and still giving here to this community, so.
That pays a service.
Yeah, so yes. We'll talk about that after, but yes.
So great. New library cards are always free and replacement cards will be free until January thirtieth.
No.
Does that, until June thirtieth, excuse me. Does that require board action, Marge, or do you have current?
I think we have a, Brian was gonna, someone was gonna make a motion.
Yeah, it's, because it's in your report that cards will be free, but what we really should be reporting is that we would ask this board to authorize for new library cards and replacement library cards to be free through June thirtieth.
Well, you and library cards are always free.
You are correct.
Okay. So Brian.
You're going to make the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to propose the motion to extend the free replacement cards for the library until June thirtieth, twenty-two, twenty-three.
I second the motion. So everyone in favor? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion was passed. Thank you, Brian.
Well, those written components complete my director's report.
And I apologize, I'm going to take us a little off track. I wanted to get to the discussion of the long-range plan, but I wanted to circle back quickly in terms of the president's report. We've had a number of excellent meetings with the library. I was able to join the February eight meeting of the Friends of Chappaqua Library. Bob Conrad joined as well. It was an excellent meeting reflecting on the success of the annual appeal. I'm looking forward to the book sale and the organization's efforts with the library to, to plan for that sale. We had good discussion about priorities for the library where friends may be going to step in and offer support. Anything you'd add to that? No, I mean, okay, then the next day on February ninth, we had a, really a training session with WLs led by Terry Krishner, who joined us by video conference. And this was a meeting of the board, the director, our department heads joined as well. And we talked about the results, the comparative results across the library system of Westchester Library of Westchester County and how Chappaqua's library compared. And what I want to share with the community is that Terry led off to, by speaking to the fact that our library is really held up on a pedestal as achieving such excellent rapport with our community in developing engaging programs, the quality of staff. He really felt that we were a best practice player in the arena of community engagement and a model for other libraries. So it was difficult to imagine hearing better praise from someone in his position. We, we went on to, to drill down into the various particulars, but I wanted to share that excellent praise with the broader community. We then had a meeting today with our council, BSK, and walked through the applicability of a variety of laws to all that this board does and, and some of the activities of the director. And I think that we felt that that was very educational to ensure that we are in the best position to perform for the community and for this library. So that's my report. And with that, we can move to finance. Do we still have Joe Gallo on?
No, he had to. He needed to pull off.
I'm going to read Joe Gallo's report. February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I have prepared the statement of operating activities on a cash basis and the summary of restricted and board-designated funds and the capital funds. Detail of the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library for the month of January twenty-two, twenty-three and for the seven months ended January thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. I have also prepared schedule of pre-authorized expenditures from January twenty-fourth, twenty-two, twenty-three through February twelve, twenty-two, twenty-three, and the schedule of bills payable as of February thirteenth, twenty-two, twenty-three. Information presented in the above referenced reports were received from the data entered into the library's QuickBooks accounting program. The cash transactions are complete and in good order. I have reviewed the library's bank statements and the related reconciliations for January twenty-two, twenty-three. All bank accounts have been reconciled to the library's books, with no exceptions noted. I have reviewed the supporting documentation for all items listed in the bills payable report and have signed the related checks presented to me. All documentation for these expenditures was in good order and all invoices were properly respectfully submitted. Joseph T. Gallo. So financials should all be in the packet if anyone has any questions.
With that, I'll address those other resolutions that we want to make. So we, we can discuss with Joe, there are two items where we're ahead of time to budget. One is very small, local library aid, and one is more considerable in terms of building maintenance where we've had, as I think we all know, a number of unexpected repairs needed for our facility. Nothing else jumps out? Okay, yeah, I asked the board to approve the bills as presented. Can I make a motion to approve the bills as presented? Do I have a second?
Motion.
Brian Cook's second, any discussion? Okay, motion is passed, or excuse me, please. Motion is passed, uh, excuse me, well, please. And your agreement. Brian, who are you opposed? No opposition. Motion's passed. Thank you very much. Uh, I know there was a recommendation you wanted to make under the category of personnel. Can you lead us off in that part?
Mr. Mary Roden.
The, uh, the TTO, oh yeah, I received a petition from an employee asking that their TTO. Earned for use last calendar year or no later than January. Thirty first of this calendar year, be rolled forward. Into the next calendar year, and I heartily recommend. That we do that due to the staffing circumstances of the department that they're in. They had not enough time to, um. Use their approved vacation. And due to personal circumstances, they could really use it in the coming months, so. I would ask that the board, um, go ahead and approve that petition. If you will.
And then, did you want to make a motion? Yeah. Sorry. Um, okay, so I made a motion to approve the director's request. To, uh, have a one-time extension of a rollover of forty hours of TTO. Of Chantel Penya to be used by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. All in favor? Well, second.
I seconded.
Can we have discussion first? Yes, so Pam has seconded, now we can have discussion. Um, I'll start if that's okay?
Okay.
Um, so. Um. Are we saying forty hours because we know it's forty hours? That was the request. Okay. That was my question, I'm good.
And that was fair. With the benefits.
Great, yeah. Okay, so I made a motion, Pam, second. Vote, all in favor?
I.
Bye. Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Great.
No other personnel matters, Bob?
No.
Okay, and we turn to the committee reports. Brian Cook, can you lead us off with finance?
But we are, um, working with our director of preliminary budget, that was the first pass of the draft. So that is on track and regarding the treasurer hire, we, um. We just got a recommendation of a potential. External candidate today, and we're also talking to a member of the community who potentially could fill. Fill that role or work with the finance committee, who that person was a CPA, so they would have. Most of the relevant, uh, accounting knowledge and experience. So, and that person has been in touch with Joe Gallo to. Do some due diligence on, on the job, so we're making some progress there.
Okay, and. The next steps in the budget process?
Uh, um. Shortly.
So. Our directors presented a draft, right, to the finance committee?
And then we're.
And then we are agreed to have a session on March sixteenth.
Or second.
Right. Mm-hmm, to review the budget and. At its current state of drafting.
Yeah, correct. Are we gonna meet before that?
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that's accurate.
That's a good assessment, okay. Okay, thank you, Brian. When we turn to policy and bylaws, I know the. Committee's been working on many policies, yes. So, um, we're going to be making some changes on the Chapalua Public Library. Policy page, we're going to be categorizing and reformatting and reorganizing and re-everything. With all the policies housed in appropriate headings, just for more, um. Easy to read, like things that are, we're gonna follow actually Austinings, which are. It's ALA policies, um, employee trustees and volunteer policies. Library, library circuit material policies and patron policies. And even if that's not exact at this time, we, we, they will be reorganized into, so they're not just all enough of that. Correct, right, okay, um, we, um, working on creating a standard template for all policies. Including date of last approval, anticipated review date, related policies attached as well as. Forms, for example, facilities usage, the form will be attached to the policy, as well as another, as well as, um. The standard template also includes the font, believe it or not, and you know, the size heading and verbiage of what Chapakla Public Library and how it should be referred to. In, in each of the policies. So we have made quite a new way. On the so- social media policy, internet policy. Patron and conduct policy, anti-bullying and harassment. Oh, well, let me talk about that answer. We're renaming. The library cards. Policy. It's called library cards fines and fees. It's going to be renamed circulation and borrowing policy. That's pretty monumental, and, um, it also has been handed out the museum policy, so. Given that they have been out and circulated among trustees for a couple of weeks now, um. They are, they have been headed towards council for, for them to give their final say and hopefully we'll be able to approve. Those four for our March meeting and tonight's meeting, we will be able to approve patron conduct policy. That is, that's all I have to report is, does anybody have any questions?
So I'm a recent addition to the policy committee. And as of about five minutes before this meeting, I pointed out that I have concerns about the patron. Code of Conduct policy, and I'm just wondering. If there is a way to shorthand for us what the significant policy changes were.
What was most significant because I, um, had read your comment on animals, and if you look at our current patron, um, in the current. Code right now, we have no person sheltering animals into the building except for the service, except for service animals. Defined by law or any animals used in library programs. That has been, that's, that's current, so actually nothing was changed, except we expanded upon. Um, that only service animals as defined by applicable law or animals used in library programs. Are permitted in the building and courtyards, so we've expanded on our pre-existing animals. Um, so what has changed the most in this is one that we alphabetized it for a much easier read. Instead of jumping all over the place. We also made sure that our. That the. General behavior. Of. Hate speech, hate symbols, we, that was, that was all added in fighting words and other forms of personal attacks. Prohibited, um, any form of sexual misconduct, so it was very much more elaborate, elaborated on in this policy, so we added specificity.
Exactly.
To prior existing intent.
Correct.
Correct, correct. And then finally, we also revisited the enforcement. Because we have a library director who is very well-knowledge about how, what happens and, and how do you enforce. Library policies at this library, at our library, and. So in the old, in the previous policy, the enforcement would had, had very specific actions which. Legally, we, we can't necessarily take, so it was just best to omit it. And come and create, oh, you know, a couple of sentences. About what the library does, about, you know, the public who break these rules, which are asked to leave. Expelled from the library premises or have library privileges withdrawn by the library director. Um, other unlawful or other behavior may result in the involvement of the Chapalua Police Department. And so in shortening it, we felt it was, um, much easier to read. As well as administer.
And I, I think you worked on the tone as.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the polit- thank you for bringing that up. The library is for everybody. And so we want everybody to feel welcome. We want everybody to feel like this is a place to be. And not have to worry about how, we want everybody invested in positive behavior here. So that, those are the biggest changes, that's the biggest change to it, and then the. Um, idea is also that we will take our anti-bullying. We rolled our anti-bullying and harassment policy into the general behavior. Of the patron conduct code. So. Actually, I, I can make a motion to. To eliminate. The anti-bullying harassment policy from our list of policies. Because it's been.
Because it's been rolled.
It could be retired because it's been incorporated into the patron conduct.
As reviewed by.
As reviewed by our council. So. Do you, do you guys, or do you want me to say that?
Is that a two-part motion?
Um, no, I think it could be one. I think that I make a motion to. To remove our, to remove the anti-bullying harassment policy. As it has been folded into our patron conduct policy, which is approved by council.
A second? So, so we actually have to approve our policy ourselves? So we should.
Approve them.
What the motion can.
Right, so let's make a motion.
Start with the motion for the.
The page.
You want, and then end it, end it with, and this will eliminate, you know?
Okay, thank you so much. So, and make a motion for us to accept the February. Twenty twenty three revised addition, revised edition of the patron conduct policy for Chapalua Public Library.
My second emotion, second motion.
All in favor?
All in favor? I. Okay.
The second motion is the first motion if you wrote it. Okay, um, do you want me to say?
I'll second Pam's motion to eliminate the anti-bullying and harassment policy from our active policies.
Since it has been.
Yeah.
Since it has now been incorporated into, yeah, whatever the combination of the language.
Perfect.
Um, so, I don't think.
So I made them, or you made.
No, I made the motion you seconded.
Okay.
All in favor? Favor, I.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, I do want to note, I'm sorry, I do want to note that museum past policy, the change that was. Put on that just for the public to hear and know is that we went from the loan period of three days to four days. Okay, just incorporating, um, long weekends. And just, just being able to.
I assume the librarian said that will work better for them.
Correct, because it works better for, uh, because it works better for our community.
Yes.
Right?
Perfect.
Say Pam, is that policy not ready for approval tonight?
You know, I felt that it should just get run by council, just so, so it just starting this whole new slate of, of. Of the policies.
Yeah. Right, uh, like. So procedure-wise, can we tie procedure for one second? Because I think, um. I'm wondering what the procedure, like, so normally I would draft a policy, share it with everybody. Maybe even bring it to the public in a draft form. Before kicking it out to BSK. So that when it came back from them. We've already discussed it in the public. At the table. So that whatever version they put in front of us, hopefully we're not modifying it again, and then that sits there for. Uh, one packet and then the following month we approve it is what I was envisioning from trying to keep things. In the public eye, but maybe that's too long, not necessary, I don't know.
Um, it's a good, it's a good thought, it's a good question, and certainly something, um, we, we can do.
We have discussed this though, specifically the Monday morning. And that's why I can't tip it out.
Right.
But do we have?
No, but are you, and here we have a.
Do we have an approach? Like, do you know what to do to get a policy from point A to?
Yes, yeah, so, so today it's been a discussion, discussion amongst the committee.
Correct.
Presentation of draft language.
Or anything, even what the board president or the director would like to work on, that, that's what I was, I would also say is things have come up.
I'm not knowing about which policies we pick, because I think we might firm that up when we build this house of which ones sit and where, and then things become important, but. I just want to make sure that the five of us and Bob are all aligned in terms of how a policy. From the time we're working on it, like we decided to work on this policy. Where are we having the discussion about the substantive changes in the policy? Because that has to happen in the public before we approve the policy, so. I'm suggesting that we bring a draft to the table without BSK.
Okay.
For us to kind of mull over at this table. I mean, depending on the policy, maybe they would have a, a, you know, maybe the pre- committee would preview it with them, but at some point I'd be like. There should be discussion of the substantive changes at this table before we get it, like, so that it's ready to go to the web.
Um, that, that works for me. I mean, I think that that's, I think that's okay.
I think there may be an exception for some change where we think the changes requires expediency or where it is a, um. Completely non-controversial.
Or it's a new, or it's a brand new policy.
Yeah, okay, except how does that keep the. So the whole, like, the whole write-up is like, we're supposed to show it to everybody, and for bylaws, it's very specific, right? You gotta, you gotta bring it, you gotta read it, you gotta do a bunch of stuff. Everything else, I don't know that it's that specific, and I agree with you, there's gonna be time to run stuff through. But I would like to understand that when something is in the packet, it means this, and when it's in this format, so I kind of want to understand. The process that we're following, so I know, like, listen, if it's already at BSK, don't even look at it because. It's already been discussed at the table and it's coming back for a vote, not a rehashing, you know, so that's where I'm trying to figure out where the points of decision are for the public. To hear our conversation and for us as members too.
Well, I, I. As I'm working on, as, as we, we're on your, we're on the, the same committee, so as we're, as we're working on this, I, I think, I see no reason. Why, why not to do what, what you have suggested. Put in, you know, for, put into the March packet. Policies that, that we're working on, discuss them as, as we're discussing, you know, as, and then. And then they can be sent off.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I, I would also, you know, want to be, um. You know, want to be mindful of, of the board time also.
Yes. Yeah, so that's the whole thing, it's the quickest, most efficient path, that, that's, so. For the ones that are in the packet, we would expect everybody to give us feedback and have discussion tonight. Of the packet, obviously there'll be some lingering things in email, but our goal is to discuss at the table.
Yes, correct.
And then between this meeting where we first showed you something and the next meeting. We would hope to, to get all that feedback incorporated, maybe even send it to BSK and bring it back in a more final.
I feel we've been doing that, but I don't feel like.
But no, but I think Liz is saying that maybe there should, there should be more activity happening here. Okay.
All right, great, I think we're good. I. Let me do, I'm a very visual person, I will draw a little picture of this just so that we're all clear, and then if we, if it doesn't work and we don't follow it, that's fine, but.
Well, I think the. Time thing is just because sometimes we don't know if what we're thinking about. For whatever reason, that policy might be changed or a new policy is okay, and so we, so Pam checks with BSK first. For whatever reason, that policy might be changed or a new policy is okay. And so we, so Pam checks with BSK first. It's not that we're excluding anybody from the conversation because even if BSK has said this is good, we are still having the conversation. So I don't think it's an egg or a chicken question. I think sometimes we don't know.
That's a very good point because we have had some policies where our council has basically a template that that we were previously unaware of and we spent a lot of time going through drafts, et cetera. Only to have them say, no, it needs to look like this.
Correct.
Like the so.
Policy.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying.
Right, like the remote.
Right.
It is not. We just don't know.
Correct, correct. And and we feel that same way about like this social media policy. That there's so much legal, I'm sure that that you know, that we don't know about.
Right.
Start, yeah.
Right.
We also.
Correct.
Best advice first.
Correct.
Have a discussion. Not like, even if they've seen it, we wouldn't have discussion.
Correct.
So I think it's, I I feel confident in Pam's judgment.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I agree.
Uh, it's it's not a lack of confidence in anyone's judgment. I just wanna make it clear that it's strictly for the sake of my own explicit clarity of like, are we, are we showing the public something that's final, final at one meeting? And then voting it at the next, or are we showing it to them and voting at the same meeting? So I'm gonna try to get clarity around the different ways that this could work to Dana's point, because it's not always the same and you're using your best judgment. So there are going to be times when it goes to council first, but let me, cause it's my, I wanna do this for our board and for the public to make sure that there, that we really are true to the conversation that should be happening around the policy. So I will, I'll take that on.
Okay.
Um, pardon, you have the bandwidth for that right now? Um, this is like the, like, if we aren't doing policies in the open air, then then that would be really bad. So this I'm gonna make bandwidth for, yes.
I I I would clarify that I do think we are. Like talk about what policies are under review.
I think sort of make it clear to the public when, so like, I would like to be able to tell someone that when I put this policy in the packet, it's actually for vote on this date. That's where I wanna get to, hopefully.
Right.
No exceptions.
Okay. Pam, did you also want to raise um the issue of our pandemic policy?
Oh, I I get it. So as of so I I would like to bring to the board. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we we absolve, we we absolve.
Retire.
We retire, thank you. We retire that policy.
Do you have a second and then we can have discussion?
Well, certainly.
Okay.
So, okay, so the feeling is, and Bob, please, please pipe in, okay, that that as of right now, there is no more, you know, all the New York State has basically called, you know, has retired all of the pandemic policies and masks wearing and et cetera, et cetera. And so it's just felt that it's not something that we're not in a a current state of pandemic. And so in trying not to oversaturate with policies.
When you said when that was approved?
Yes, so this, so this policy was adopted November seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, so it's to retire the policy from November twentieth.
Right.
So we have not looked at it.
It's not been looked at.
Since then, and now it is January twenty thirteen, yeah, twenty twenty-three.
I would not recommend that you um I'm sorry, what what was the language that you used? Cancel? Retire. I would not recommend it. I believe that the state mandated to have a pandemic policy. It's not intended to be specific to the the current pandemic, which may be winding down. It's intended to be a broad pandemic policy for um for an institution to use for the next one. Now, if there are specific um elements of the safety plan that you would like to see revised or or changed, I think you can communicate that to me outside of a board meeting and I will work to change those, but so far as I know, we're not operating under a current safety plan anyway and other um procedural decisions with regards to mask requirements during certain hours of operation are internal staff made. So the there's no need to change policy to uh to affect the kind of change I think you may be looking for.
Okay, so we will need to change policy if that's true because the policy specifies a weekly.
Right, if you're not following the policy, then we do have to change the policy, yes.
We're absolutely not, not following. So so then, then it also brings into question the safety plan. Which is incorporated.
Is supposed to be updated regularly in the building.
Um, but this safety plan, Liz, is is connected to the pandemic policy. So.
Yes.
So should, so does the library need a safety plan policy? Okay, does it have to be attached to a pandemic policy? One, it's completely hard to find.
So um, so we've been trying to take procedure out of policy, so the same way that you took um, the procedure details out of the patron conduct policy. We didn't add the details of the safety plan into the pandemic policy. The idea being that the director owns that plan and that that plan is a living, breathing document that needs to be nimble because if tomorrow, the, you know, the 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 thing changes, the director needs to respond to the current thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, there are things in that pandemic policy that are, are in the safety plan that are very extreme and a far field of what a library would normally do. So whether we, you know, I don't know how we wanna deal with that. I think there might be things we wanna enact into policy so that procedure never conflicts with our policy. Um I don't necessarily want to change the safety plan because I feel like that is the director's job. They should make sure the building is safe.
Correct.
If we enact a policy above that plan and the plan is no longer viable because the policy doesn't the, you know, the plan doesn't support the policy above it, then he would change his plan.
But the, okay, so for clarification, the safety plan is incorporated into into the pandemic policy.
No, the pandemic policy points to a procedural plan that Bob owns internally. And in that plan, there might be things about masking or hours or cleaning.
Okay.
That he controls.
Okay.
That we wouldn't impact unless we put policy in place that contradicts his plans.
Okay, which we're not looking to do, right, okay.
Right, so far as I I'm gonna confirm what Liz is saying, so far as I understand, a pandemic policy is mandated by the state. And what this one does is it refers a lot of those procedural questions to a safety plan and to a pandemic team. So far as I know, the pandemic team and.
When activated.
When activated, but so far as I know, the pandemic team and the safety plan were phased out before I was, before I even began in in November.
Correct.
So elements of the plan that were once in place, I think um.
I thought you just said the safety plan must be always in place.
No, no.
When the pandemic. If the safety plan is no longer being followed, then a hundred percent of our employees would be a hundred percent in the building for their work hours. And that's not happening. So somebody's still following the safety plan.
Some, some components of the safety plan, I think, fell into practice without an understanding of where they came from.
Correct.
Again, before I was hired.
Okay, so we're just continuing the safety plan. You just said that that.
Wait, he just said that he.
That, well, he's going to write a new one that says, this is the new safety plan or whatever, but it would not include things like work from home unless that we had another situation where.
No, this, the safety plan should not be activated because we are no longer in a pandemic.
Right.
And therefore, all the provisions that existed historically on the safety plans um should be clarified to be not applicable.
Okay, so you can keep, you can keep the pandemic, so then the pandemic policy stays.
Used to be called upon as.
As as needed, correct. But the safety plan, wait, but the safety plan is not, does not need, is no longer needs to be followed because we're not in pandemic.
Jeff, does it support that, that he doesn't, that we don't need to be following that safety plan unless we say start following the safety plan?
I think this is a perfect example. We were just speaking about how best to manage policy as to which ones should go first to council because they will have definitive guidance on what the law dictates. And I think this is an example of that versus the other type of policy um such as patron conduct, where we've got real opinions about what what should be spoken to. Um, and then once agreed, it should go to council.
Yes, and I'm sorry, it was very confusing to say that the safety plan and the pandemic team have both been deactivated. That's, I don't know who said that. I wrote it in the notes.
No, but it's not. I I made it, I mean, cause I started by, I started by like making, you know, Tom said that, okay.
I may be mistaken, Dana, but that's my understanding. I certainly haven't. I certainly haven't convened with any uh pandemic team since I was appointed, and I certainly haven't revisited the contents of the safety plan.
Okay, that's why.
It's and and if it, okay, if it is, it says if once activated, unless otherwise specified by the team, the plan will be reviewed and revised weekly.
So we have a little work in that policy probably to clean it up, to make it uh work for us into perpetuity.
Well, not really, because because it does open up a larger can of worms. It opens up more stuff about um, we're done. About employee attendance and activities, you know, it's, these are, so so Bob has to take a look at this because you can't just follow bits and pieces, right? Like either, either they're in a pandemic, we're following the safety plan or we're not in a pandemic, but we need to have a pandemic policy understood. But we can't, we can't follow, you know, an eighth of it.
I think we could kill that motion and
Okay.
propose a revised motion, which would be to agree if that's the character of the word at this point in time, that the pandemic policy is no longer activated. And that we will review that policy.
Okay, so I don't think that that's a motion. I think that that's like a task, I mean, okay, so I'll take that as as an assignment, right, okay.
So our pandemic policy is still active on the website and we're gonna figure out what that means for our organization tomorrow, tomorrow.
The policy is still active, right, but we are no longer.
We're not in a pandemic.
Activated state of engaging that policy with.
Correct, correct. So our legal team can help us with what that means for to- tomorrow in the library and then we can look at the policy and see if we need to reword that a little bit to make it clear when we're, how we move in and out of a pandemic.
Okay, we are agreeing that the pandemic policy is no longer activated and we will agree that what needs to be revised per council. Uh-huh. And the safety plan is separate consideration. Even though the pandemic policy refers to the safety plan.
We're not canceling the pandemic plan, so.
No, we're saying that it's no longer activated. It's not activated. We're not, we're not removing it. We're not.
It's, I don't think you activate a policy.
Doesn't actually use that word.
It does, and then, okay, fine. Thanks, Jen. Okay. Thank you. That's a good discussion. Anything else?
No, there's absolutely no more policies. No matter what, there's no more policies.
Hey, can we turn to go to communication?
Um, we have not had another communications meeting. We've had some topics on communications, for example, uh notifying the newspaper of record and things of that sort. So we will follow up, but those are more tasks than no decisions, no decisions.
Okay.
Uh, in view of time, we've got a detailed report for building and grounds. I'll turn to building and grounds um. The biggest news is that we finished the next job. Um, at this point in time, we're down to a punchless review and a need for a working door on the children's area toddler's restroom. Um. We have on page six of the report lists a number of uh purchases and repairs under consideration. Um, with projected pricing, um probably the most notable of that uh will be the electrical panel. Um, this is the panel on the roof, which is so old and so unavailable to uh the placement parts that we've had to, as you'll see in the picture, put new switches on the side. Uh, so we're currently pressing that out with that, so no repairs noted. Most exciting is that we have the facade RFP underway. Uh, our director is working with our consultant to manage that process and we actually have a walkthrough tomorrow um for the interesting bidders to review the particulars of that RFP.
May I just ask, is there any discussion or interest or advice with regards to replacing that movie marquee sign by the bidders? Do they, anybody have a?
No, no feedback to date with that kind of particulars.
Okay.
Um, I anticipate that there will be a good degree of discussion as we walk the grounds and point to things like that.
Do we, so the current signs, they don't require illumination to be, um, no, they're illuminated. The ones outside. Right, but they do not require illumination to be to be um legible and and readable. And I'm wondering, you know, I just wanna be mindful of our environmentally sensitive area um because we really, we are. So I know during the day, I can see those signs mile away. They are really clear. I know they require manpower to maintain them. I'm willing as a taxpayer to pay for that, but maybe everyone isn't, but I do have a concern that if we add electricity, that we be mindful of when we allow the signs to be on and and that we do diligence with the environmental side of things.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, okay. Good point. Um, we do have a few uh motions that arise out of the various activities of building and grounds committee. Um, the most exciting I'll start off with in the board packet is the Atlantic Westchester proposal. Um. This is. Yeah, but I don't have the current. Okay, um, we have a proposal from Atlantic Westchester whose contract we renewed at the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty three meeting to enhance the service provided by them, um, under which they would provide improve the filtration, taking our system from MERV eleven to MERV thirteen, which is excellent, near hospital quality of air filtration. There's additional cost for the quality of filters involved as well as the frequency of visits required to change out those filters, uh because they'll be trapping more particles, et cetera. Uh, we're very excited um by this proposal in terms of safety for patrons and staff. And I make a motion that we accept the additional cost as proposed of two thousand five hundred dollars for this um increased filtration. My second. All in favor? Any discussion?
Yeah, so um, the cost, the incremental cost is just the cost of filters and service. Oh, and it's and it's an incremental service. Okay. Okay.
So I believe it's two more visits a year.
Yeah, I don't have a, I am, I love this proposal, like if you do nothing else on this board, like, uh, like. Bow down to Jen for getting us the MERV thirteens. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out whether we actually. Procedurally, he needs us to make the motion because it's over the two thousand in the way they packaged it, but if they would have sent it to us. As just a. A change of service and then separately build us your filters, it wouldn't even come to our attention. Uh, because it's not a significant, it's really not, in the grand scheme of things, it's not significant, but.
Costly.
Uh, but I see why in this way we have to look at it at this table, but I do want to just take the time to say again, thank you, this is like. Uh, you know, in terms of things the public tells me about and cares about, this is huge, so. Um, you know, more than a mask, getting better air for everybody in here is really huge, thank you.
Well, and we should thank our staff because we had a lot of input on the importance of this and. We see you push back from the vendor and our consultants continue to push on our behalf. So that's excellent. A few more things I'll speak to in the packet.
Are we voting? Forgive me. Um, I I think we did vote, it was unanimous. That was discussed.
But then you discussed, yes, all in favor, thank you.
I. Two members.
Another point, um, in terms of materials in the packet, this is not for a vote, but I wanted to call it to everyone's attention. Because it is a substantial expense. We wanted to obtain a proposal to indicate the cost for replacing the. Carpet system in the main part of the library. This is outside of the newly renovated, uh, new addition children's area, for example. Uh, this would be the brown carpet tiles that have been in place for well over a decade. And it would also include some floor leveling. The staff has been very concerned, and I think patrons. Uh, by some dips that exist because of the underground, the. The network of ductwork, et cetera, under the carpet tiles. Uh, so the proposal, which is presented by RVP Flooring Systems, which is a pre-bid contractor. So it would not require competitive proposals. Comes in a substantial amount, hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. For that entire space and. Addressing the leveling of the floor, forgive me.
Is the leveling part, if they're doing, let's say, concrete or anything else, it's not carpet, is that considered capital?
Yes, the, the entirety.
The car, is the carpet? Carpet is not usually considered capital, but if you're doing work to level, you're pouring concrete.
The holes that are there, were they to serve a purpose that, you know, they, they, um. From what I've been told, they, uh. Reflected unevenness with that underlying duct ductwork, and as the carpet settled over time, some people walking on it, et cetera. It became more pronounced such that it, you know, there are places in the library.
What have you done?
It's wiring, it's.
Right, that's.
Components of the library.
So may I just, just so we're mindful, if there are things that we're doing that involve electrical, for example, with our wiring for camera. Et cetera, and they're pulling up the carpet, that might be the time to start looking at what's underneath there, because. Cabling has changed and you don't need this much space now, you can use this, and then we, so can we just. As they're looking, look and see what's really there?
Well, we are not presenting this as a proposal for both at this point in time. We want to put it down or considerate.
Yeah.
For future budget.
Yes.
Um, and present it to the public as an option, uh, one or considerable expense.
Do most libraries go with carpet nowadays? I've been walking around a lot of libraries and I'm feeling like I haven't been seeing a lot of carpet, but.
The libraries I'm familiar with do, but you're right, you've seen Pergo and bamboo flooring and other. Things being done, yeah.
Is it mainly for sound?
But also.
Sitting on the carpet for kids, I mean, I I think, right, and maybe in the other spaces, but I. Would expect that that's carpet for that reason. We're sitting on. So, so like, we have carpet all the way up to our circ desk. Well, actually, not really, we have some tile, I think. But there, you could argue that that entire. Area should not be carpet. And I don't, I mean, I can, I could blow this whole thing up and say that I want to look at the whole building before we re-carpet. Uh, which is true for me personally, but I'm not going to, you know, try to be a perfectionist about things. If we need to re-carpet, we need to do it, I just. I'm asking these questions because I have been touring and I see a lot of different surface coverings that aren't carpet. And I see carpets predominantly where you do have kids sitting on. So you're saying for high-traffic area, maybe they're different surface? Yes. Okay, so I'm sure they'll look at that, right, Jen?
Yep, yep. Become something I'm proud of, to take into consideration.
And and then I do think there's more to those. Boxes underneath and we just need to make sure that we don't ever leave them for anything before we eliminate them. Because the solution to level the floor is eliminating all of those opportunities for electricity. Uh, would be.
I don't believe that's what's contemplated, but. You know, we've got.
I've only seen one and it looked like, yeah, exactly. Let's look down and do it and they'll tell us that that's the concern is not to eliminate. Something that was done unintentionally.
Any other motions here on being Jane? Um, yes, we have two resolutions. And from council relative to SEBRA. Where they are listing the incorrect library name. So modification would be required to re- to reflect our library name. This is a SEBRA. Resolution with respect to the, what we've been calling a mixed job project, including the children's area. Hotlair's restroom as well as the reference area sink replacement. And. So admitting that we're going to need to modify this, we're asking that it be resolved, we're asking that this were agreed, that it is resolved. That the project constitutes a type-two action. As quoted under SEBRA. Can I ask?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution for, uh. Determining that the project to complete laboratory renovations is a type-two action and is not subject to further review.
Do we have a second?
I just want to make sure. It's a template, the templates, right? Okay, fine.
All in favor? Shantel, forgive me, I thought that was a second resolution as well with respect to. I don't see it there, so we'll address that in the March meeting. Um, it will be this, a similar resolution with respect to the resurfacing contract.
Well, that's right here. The one that you just approved. As amended. And. The sign and data. And the one that you're discussing now with regards to asphalt paving. Um, you can see it under the first whereas. From asphalt paving, resurfacing and associated sidewalk.
Okay. So in the board packet, we have a resolution with respect to New York State Environmental Quality. Quality Review Act determining that an action at the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library constitutes a take-two action. That is not subject to further review. This addresses, as. Bob Conrad pointed out, the resurfacing project that has been agreed by this body and is scheduled to. Take place in late April or early May of twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act determining that an. Action at the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library constitutes a type-two action that is not subject. To further review with regard to the front parking lot.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Okay.
It's good, we'll clarify.
Um, finally, under the heading of the Safety and Security Committee. We have a revised proposal. Unfortunately, we had incorrectly quoted proposal number two-three-oh-eight. From Strategum Security with respect to video control. The corrected. Version of the invoice is presented in the current board packet. The corrected amount. Is forty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
That's our proposal. Can I make a motion that we? That we. Recent our prior motion. With regard to Strategen invoice number two-three-oh-eight. Proposal number two-three-oh-eight. And that. We accept this new motion to engage Strategum against proposal number two-three-oh-eight. In the dollar amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Do I have a second? My second. All in favor?
I. And the writing is that we offer as the director to engage Strategum.
But that will turn to. Dana, if there's anything to share with respect to. HR and governance.
Sure, we met for the first time on Monday, the twenty-sixth. And, um, discussed staff. Organization and budget specifically to update the org chart. We also discussed the work from home, other issues, um, include updates to the employee handbook that we will look at as our priority items. As well as the performance evaluation of the current director. And. Okay. Um. And.
Fellow trustees, please excuse me, we have another, um, building and grounds. Proposal for your review, which is. An invoice from IQ Associates, they're the contractor that's been working on the mixed job combination of activities. And they've presented an invoice for one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. This involved replacing the hot water heater in the reference area, which had been. Sitting on a shelf, as I'm told, for a year, and there were concerns about rust and corrosion. And the second had to do with the addition of. Which. Thank you. For a total of one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. I'll make a second. I'll make the motion that we accept the additional cost proposed by IQ to completely mix job. Combination of jobs for one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Do I have a second? Dana, who seconds? All in favor? I'm unanimous. No. That was as presented in Jen there. Okay, um, do we have any public comments? Let's see, yes, really. Anything to note in terms of. Action items and steps. A long list, right, too long for right now.
Um, I believe we had on our calendar that we are supposed to be present, we are supposed to have, um. March, we had, uh, New York State Annual Report due WLS, I'm not really sure what that is. And we also have a, a special schedule for. Thursday, the sixteenth of March, and then our next board meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Dana, I could speak to the point of the New York State.
Yes.
Or, I almost mentioned it in my director's report. That the portal, which used to open in January, it's a little bit like the Super Bowl, Super Bowl, that moved a little later and later every year. It now opens in February and the deadline for libraries to report. On their prior fiscal year is now very, very early March. And so, um, staff and I are working on that, as is our treasurer. Uh, the appropriate login and just reporting on. Financial circulation and other data. Uh, one final element of the report, I'll be asking all of you for the current. Contact information because this does get reported to the state and it does become subject to, uh, public searches. So.
Does that be on email?
It includes home address, telephone number and email.
Collected on this. Yes. The auditors. Um, usually at this point, they would be looking to get into our meeting and present their findings. Are they close to wrapping up or?
I think there were some delays with providing them certain data that they asked for. Diennially. So there may be a delay to their total, their final report. They have not been in contact with me about scheduling the presentation yet. So that's, that's. That's my update is.
Brian Cook and Shantel Penya reached out to request an introduction of the entire board to the audit team. Um, because of the newness of some of the members of this board.
They usually come and present and you would meet them, so yes, that, that's good, great. So are we, they, they should come on March twenty-seventh?
If they're ready, but it sounds like we were delayed in getting them stopped and we have to make sure that they've had enough time to prepare our audit. So Bob, you'll advise us in that regard?
Yeah, we'll find out soon.
If we don't have any other issues for discussion, the last point I want to make is that petitions for library trustees. Uh, the deadline is April seventeen. This board's working to provide some materials to help, um, our community members understand what is entailed with serving as a trustee. And, um, more to follow in that regard. But we certainly encourage interest.
The official timeframe to to collect signatures, do you know when that would start for everyone?
Um, petitions become available April seventeenth. That's what the legal woman voters advised.
Okay, okay, so we, yeah.
Which I think is right.
So for anyone who doesn't, isn't familiar with the process and might be considering running. Um, the, the first step is to decide that you love the library and you want to sit at this table. The second step is to get the form from Lisa Mills there at the district. And then she will tell you how many signatures each person that wants to be on the ballot has to, it's the same number for everyone. It's based on. The prior election results, how many people voted in that election, which is also. It's based on the prior election results, how many people voted in that election, which is also why it's really important for us to get people to vote. Um, it's every, you know, the, that determines how many people, like, you know, if you if you have too few people voting, you have fewer signatures you need, so um, I think it was something around maybe fifty when I came on, it might have dipped to like twenty-four one year, so it's something uh for us to keep in mind, right? More to follow on that.
But I move for adjournment at nine eleven.
Nine eleven PM.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting at nine eleven PM. All in favor?
I.